You're good to go.
All right, well, it's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. First thing we'll do is just a quick reminder, silence your cellphones and wait to be called upon. Try to remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. That being said, let me get a quick roll call. Planning Commission members. Andy, you're here.
Here.
Is Alex here? I didn't see him long ago. All right, hopefully he jumps in. Tim?
Here.
Uh, John?
Here.
And Tony Bodner?
Yes, here.
All right, let's see, we have David Collingwood.
Here.
Collingwood and Supervisor Miller.
Here.
And who do we have with the Schlosser project?
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Not real well.
Not real well, no.
Uh, my name's Kirk Klaus.
Yeah.
And I'm, uh, here from Schlosser and Klaus to represent the application.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone here for the furlong project, or is that just something we need to talk about?
No, it's a, it's a simple planning module. I'll explain it when we get there.
Good enough. All right. Well, there's our roll call. Uh, first order of business would be approval of the minutes, uh, from our April meeting. Anyone have any corrections, uh, directions, completions?
This is Tim. I have none.
All right, here and none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Andy.
John make the motion.
Second.
All right, so John made the motion. Andy second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, so Select Properties was next on the agenda, and they are not here tonight. So, we're gonna move on to the Schlosser form. So, Kirk, if you wanna kick this off?
Uh, I am filling in for my partner, Andy Schlosser. And Steve, would you be so kind to, to, uh, bring the board up to speed?
Um, yeah, I, I could do that. So, the, the Planning Commission has seen this plan, I guess, on two other occasions. Uh, and the la- the last time, um, there was a modification to, to the lots. You recall, they added one, one building lot along the cul-de-sac. Uh, but generally stayed the same, was the cul-de-sac that's just over the length, permitted length, but less than 13 lots. And the large side of the, uh, upper side of the cul-de-sac is a lot around the existing dwelling. When we had talked at last meeting, I think you, Planning Commission was fairly well comfortable with most of the items, but we did not take action on the plan, uh, because Andy was looking for preliminary final approval, and was suggested to him that he, you know, clean up some more of the loose ends and come back one more time before you would consider, potentially consider it as a preliminary final plan. Uh, so he, this is a couple of months later, he's done a lot of work and made this new submission. There's still quite a few comments in my letter, but that's, a lot of that is because they're carryover items that we talked about at the prior meetings, but you didn't take official action on them, so I still have them listed in here, like some of the waiver, uh, waiver issues and some other miscellaneous items. So, it's not really anything new, uh, it's more of a rehash of all the items and where the current status is. Kirk, could you take us down through the lists?
Sure. Well, before I get into Steve's letter, as far as outside agencies are concerned, uh, we've submitted to PennDOT, we've got, uh, review comments that came back, and we're back into them again. So, we're confident that we're very close with, uh, PennDOT and a PennDOT approval. With respect to sanitary sewer, uh, I believe there's, uh, a planning module that's been forwarded to the township for the Planning Commission, uh, to sign off on the component B. Uh, so as far as the septic systems are concerned, I believe that the planning approval process is well underway as well. Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, Telford Borough Water has also approved the water design. Uh, and as far as NPDES, we have submitted, uh, we have gotten our, um, administrative completeness review, and we're in for technical comments. So, with respect to all of the outside agency approvals, we're well on our way to getting, uh, to getting those permits and approvals. Um, also, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers was out at the site today. And the, as far as I've heard, the delineation that's shown on the plans has been accepted by the Army Corps, but obviously I don't have anything to prove that yet, other than a verbal okay that I, that was, uh, forwarded to myself, uh, for this meeting tonight. Um, it's my understanding that the board has had discussions over the various waivers. Would you like me to go over each of them one more time?
Yeah, if you don't mind, Kirk. Uh, you know what? Do you have the review letter in front of you?
I do.
All right, so let's just hit on the, it's number one, are these will complies A and B?
Yes.
All right. We're creatures of habit here, so we have to do it the same way each meeting, so we gotta run down this, we won't know what to do.
I'm perfectly fine with that.
If you don't mind. Um, so yeah, so next is the, is the waiver request list. So, if you wanna just touch on those, uh, you know, like Steve had said, we had, we had discussion on this and we, you know, we were pretty comfortable with everything, so.
The first waiver request has to do with, uh, some of the stormwater calculations. One of the watersheds, uh, is, uh, not in compliance by a very small amount. Your ordinance requires an, an improvement in, uh, uh, the, the stormwater capability. One of the watersheds is mostly undisturbed. Actually, the entire area is undisturbed. So, we would be asking for a, a small waiver. The post-development flow to this watershed still is, in fact, less than the pre-developed, but we haven't taken it back to what the ordinance calls a meadow condition. Uh, there's been a discussion with Steve. I won't talk for him, but I believe he's okay with this.
Steve, you wanna chime in on this one?
Yeah, um, I, I agree with what Kirk is saying. It's the, I'm sorry, Kirk. I, I have Kirk in my office and Kirk Klaus here, and I, sorry Kirk, I regularly call you both the wrong thing. The, the side we're talking about is what I would consider the north side or the upper side of the road, and is primarily the, uh, existing house lot that drains down to a culvert along the site frontage. And, um, I've had some discussions with Andy. I want him to clean up some, some verbiage in the, in the narrative, but I agree that there's no increase in stormwater runoff to that, to that existing culvert in the road. Because of that, I'm comfortable with them not reducing the, you know, the calculations to reduce the impervious or consider it meadow, the existing house and barn and driveway. All the rest of the developed portion of the site generally drains the big stormwater management basin on the lower side of the road, and that all meets, you know, exactly per our standards. That's why I'm comfortable with that waiver.
Okay. Um, any Planning Commission members have any input on that? Here and none, we'll move forward. Um, yeah, go ahead Kirk.
Uh, two B and C both have to do with the, the lot configuration with respect to radio lots or the lot to width ratio. Uh, and again, I believe there has been some discussion on this, and because of the large size of the lots, uh, I think, uh, you guys, uh, in the past were okay with these irregularities.
Yeah, and part of it had to do with all those existing features. There's only so many ways that you could chop up the property and still have buildable area.
Right, and I, I do agree that, uh, members of Planning Commission seem, uh, okay with that. Unless somebody is not, let me know now.
This is Alex. I'm fine with it.
Hey, Alex. All right.
Okay, moving on. D, two D has to do with, uh, street improvements along County Line Road. Again, I believe there was some discussion about that, and, uh, we're, we're independent. They seem to be in concurrence with what we're proposing, so, uh, we would be asking for the waiver for street improvements along County Line Road.
And that's our normal policy, that will come with a fee in lieu of, um, and I believe Andy had already submitted a cost estimate for those improvements, so that, that's something that the manager and I could work out.
Okay, uh, moving on to two E, uh, again, has to do with the cartway width of the, uh, Schlosser Lane. And again, I believe that was discussed, uh, with parking on one side, I believe it was agreed that this cartway width would be acceptable in this case.
Yep. That's my recollection at least.
Two F has to do with the cul-de-sac length. It is, in fact, greater than 800 feet, uh, but I think we have utilized the existing driveway for the existing home, uh, very nicely as an emergency access. And Andy has told me that there have been fire trucks back there, so we know it holds them, so I think they should be good.
Um, yeah, we've had a lot of discussion about cul-de-sacs and emergency access. And we're probably gonna have some, some language put into, into the saddle regarding that in the future here, but one of the, one of the concerns is maintenance of that, that driveway. Is there any way we can have some, some language added somehow to, to make sure that that is maintained?
I would say, I'm sure there is. Mary can, uh, work on that. But again, this is a driveway that will probably still be used by the lot owner of Lot 7. Uh, it's in good shape today. It should remain in good shape, and it's not like it's an emergency access that's never gonna get used. I believe, uh, this, this driveway will be used occasionally, uh, and, uh, but, but that all being said, I'm sure some language can be added through the developer's agreement or to the covenant of restrictions, uh, to that point.
Okay, Steve, you have any input on that? How that could be handled?
No, I, I agree with what, what Kirk said. Um, it'd be easy enough to include a maintenance requirement for that driveway in the, in the agreements for the property.
Everybody else all right with that?
This is John. I still object.
This is Andy. I'm still okay with it.
This is Alex. I'm fine with it.
This is Tim. I'm fine with it.
All right, moving forward.
Two G, uh, is a waiver for, uh, to permit sidewalk on one side instead of two. I believe this was also discussed. Uh, the sidewalk will run, uh, as Steve said, on the south side of the, the lower side of the road and wrap around the cul-de-sac, uh, to the new driveway for Lot 7.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure PC was, was comfortable with that as well.
Oh, also, I'd like to add, the no parking signs will be added on the side of the street that is not with sidewalk. So, the, the, the lower side of the street that has the sidewalk will be the side that permits this, the park, the on-street parking. So, the no parking sides, signs will be added to the upper side of the street where there is no sidewalk.
So, we had discussion about snow emergency signage in there as well. Is that still considered?
I believe there'll also be some, uh, snow piling areas designated, uh, in the cul-de-sac for, for that purpose as well.
I'm talking about snow emergency signs, so people aren't parking on the sidewalk, on the, on, along the road during a snow emergency.
Well, that would be fine.
I think we had discussion about that at the last meeting.
Yes, we did.
That's the, uh, end of the waiver request.
Yeah. Where did I see? What did I see? Oh, the, uh, snow storage area. I, I know that was a comment somewhere in here.
Yes. We will take care of that.
Yeah, that's in, uh, number three, three B. Bottom line there is, uh, Tony could probably weigh in on this. The Public Works prefers for the so, snow storage easement to be basically directly on the backside of the cul-de-sac turnaround, so they can plow straight through and right into a storage area. As it was proposed, it was sort of around the, we'll call it around the corner, but it was, uh, not straight back in the cul-de-sac, so. We could figure out what works best, that it doesn't drop, block a driveway, doesn't block the fire hydrant, and still has a reasonable space.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I might, I dropped out there for a second. Um, so that's something that can be, can be worked out?
Yes.
All right, um, you just wanna continue down unless, Derek Kirk?
Sure. Number three are a number of items that we've already, I've kinda already touched on, and they are all will complies, or we've already complied.
Right, that's.
We, we did get word back from the postmaster that Schlosser Lane, uh, was acceptable to them. Uh, we're having some difficulty getting, uh, back, getting information from your emergency services person.
Uh, we'll, we'll take care of that if we need his sign off. Uh, the only item of, of these, I'd like to, I guess, go back to is letter C. I think Andy Schlosser, in his response, he didn't put in, he didn't put the note on the plan about future sidewalk, and I think he justified it by saying it would be within the right of way. Uh, but because of the swale and grading out on the road, it may not be in the PennDOT right of way. In any event, I think it's at least worthwhile to have a note on the plan saying that there could be future sidewalk along, uh, County Line Road, just as a notification to the property owners.
Okay. Uh, moving on to number four. Uh, we, we've discussed that already. Uh, there will be, uh, a gang mailbox located, uh, in front of Lot number one. There's an easement shown on the plan. I believe there was a comment that, uh, they wanted, uh, Steve wanted, uh, concrete, no grass strip in front of the mailboxes. That's a really good idea, uh, so that people don't have to step over the grass, uh, to get to the backside of the sidewalk to the mailboxes. So, that area immediately in front of that gang mailbox, uh, will be, uh, concreted, uh, from the curb to the sidewalk.
So, that's a will comply, basically?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, number six is also a will comply. That's been added, uh, with respect to, uh, showing the ultimate right of way and an easement. And that will be evenly, not evenly, that will be split between Lot 7, which is the existing house lot, and Lot 1. The outbound monumentation will be installed prior to recording of the plan, as is, uh, a procedure in West Rock Hill Township. The remaining lot corners will be escrowed for and installed, uh, when the, the grading has been completed along the cul-de-sac. Uh, number eight, there'll be a fee for the recreation land. I, I believe that, that is, uh, okay with the board.
Yeah, I think that's a good assumption.
And number nine, uh, has to do with stormwater management, and to the best of my knowledge, Andy and Steve have gone through these issues, and, uh, uh, if there's a little more information needed, we'll provide it, but I believe we're, we're on the same page with the overall concept of stormwater management.
Um, I, I generally agree. Nine, nine A, that's really the discussion about that waiver comment before, um, of reduction in the existing impervious surface. Nine B is just, is a discussion regarding the fact that they've accounted for additional impervious on the lots over and above the existing house, so it'll allow for some sheds and outbuildings to be built. I just want them to itemize what that amount is on the plan, so for future reference, we, we know what it is. And C is a operation and maintenance agreement, so that's a standard, standard comment.
Uh, number 10 has to do with landscaping, and, uh, again, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're, we're okay with landscaping?
Um, let me see what I said again. I forget. Uh, I believe you're correct.
Has to do with the whips that were, uh, uh, suggested.
Yeah, so a lot of the replacement trees, instead of them planting large canopy trees, um, what they're trying to do is reforest, essentially reforest along the, the buffer areas, repairing buffer areas in those wetlands and, and along the drainage channels. And to do that, we're using this, you know, small whip trees and protect them, uh, for the first couple of years, so. Yeah, I worked that out with Andy, and I'm comfortable with the way he has it done on the plan now.
And I believe the note also talks about fencing it, so that, that those areas are protected from, uh, intrusion. It's also my understanding that these plants will also be supplied with a plastic tube over the trunk of the tree, so the deer's don't eat them all.
Yeah. If anybody's driven past, uh, Knokkamixon State Park, right off of 563, you could see in the woods where they did their, uh, where they, where they cut all the dead ash tree. They have a bunch of, uh, all you see is the plastic tubes. You don't really see the little whip trees that are in them, but, uh, that's what they were doing there, trying to replant those areas that were really devastated by the, the dead trees.
Uh, number 11 has to do with the MPDES permit. As I had said, we're, uh, well on our way to getting that. Uh, number 12 is Water Authority. As I said, that's been, we've got a verbal approval from, uh, Mark Cornier. Uh, number 13 has to do with the septic, uh, the on-lot septic systems. Uh, and as I said, I believe, uh, that we're, we've got the, um, Form B into the township for signatures to continue to keep that planning module moving forward.
Yeah, I'll talk about that a little after we get through the regular plan stuff.
Okay. Fourteen, that has to do with streetlights. Uh, there's one shown at the intersection and one shown in the cul-de-sac, as well as, uh, the driveway lamp posts. Um, you guys probably don't remember, but I represented the Krats subdivision on Ridge Valley Road, and we talked about streetlight, uh, post lights there. Uh, so we're going to investigate getting the solar-powered lamp posts, uh, for, for this development as well. Uh, I think that was suggested actually by a board member to investigate that, and it turns out they're, they're not that much more expensive, and they're, uh, a good way of handling that when you have a, a pretty decent distance from the house to the post location.
How's the illumination with the, uh, solar panel, solar-powered, uh, lamp posts?
I haven't seen one myself in person, but from what I understand, the technology has gotten much better, and they, they throw an adequate amount of light.
Cause I have one here, and, uh, it's not nearly as bright as the previous, uh, uh, electrically powered lamp, but I bought it at Home Depot and I didn't spend a ton of money, so.
Yeah, you, but you, you get what you pay for a little bit. And, yeah, with any of the LED lighting, you, you could get higher power or lower power ones, but they are continually getting, getting better.
Right. Yeah, thanks.
Uh, number 18, again, is the, uh, the developer's agreement. Uh, we know we'll do that. Nineteen is the, uh, escrow, the opinion of cost. Uh, and twenty, uh, is a will comply. We'll resolve the, uh, minor, um, labeling and miscellaneous issues that Steve has brought up.
What happened to, uh, 15 through 17?
Yeah.
That's a good question. I believe they were not properly remumbered. They were deleted from the last letter and not properly remumbered in the new letter.
Okay, just, uh.
My proof checker's not that good.
That's right, blaming on admin.
She's my last line of defense. Let me down. So, a, as, um, you know, as I indicated in the beginning, there's a lot of comments yet, but, you know, it's a lot of outside agency approvals and a lot of waiver, uh, issues, which, you know, we've discussed over the last, the last two or three meetings. Uh, so the plan, as you can see with the engineering comments at the end, there's only a, there's only a handful of items that, you know, I'd like to see cleaned up on the plan, so the plan is, I think, in, you know, relatively good condition at this point.
So, you think it's in good enough condition for a preliminary final?
Yes. The lot layout's not gonna change. The road's not gonna change.
Right.
Improvements aren't gonna change.
All right, so the first thing we'd have to do is approve the waiver request letter?
Yes.
And before we get into that, do any Planning Commission members have any comments on the plan, uh, now that we've gone through the, uh, review?
This is Alex. I don't have any, but Steve, we had talked about, talking about the, uh, planning module, the 4B component.
Yeah, I guess we could do that now. I, I was thinking after we took this vote, but, um, so I just got yesterday, I think the sewage planning modules, uh, component two for the site. Uh, the site does have, um, micromound drip systems proposed for primary and reserved, reserve areas on each one of the lots. Planning module require, has the requirement for, uh, component 4A to be completed, which is the Planning Commission's comment whether or not the, the plan is consistent with the attach-up comprehensive plan and zoning and subdivision ordinances. So, generally, if you're willing to approve the plan, uh, you know, we have no problem indicating on component 4A that the plan is consistent with our ordinances. There is a time crunch these days. Um, the DEP, in their wisdom, has decided to change the regulations regarding using the micromounds for planning purposes, so, uh, they do need to move this planning module along, so everything stays copacetic and in, in DEP's guidelines. Ultimately, they'll need maintenance agreements for the sewage systems. I talked to Andy about that, and, uh, you know, that's something that Mary Everly will prepare, and she'll do one master agreement, and it'll be assignable to the, to each of the individual locks. But that's not the Planning Commission's concern at this point. It's just an acknowledgement that the plan is consistent with township ordinances. So, you would have to ultimately, when you're making your motions, authorize, uh, the chairman to sign component 4A.
All right. Any other, any other comments from planning commission members?
This, this is Andy. Chris, just one on number 14. Did we discuss putting two lamp posts, uh, at lot seven, uh, to, uh, you know, in case, in case we needed to, that for emergency access. I thought we discussed maybe putting it on both sides.
I, I remember that discussion. Yeah.
As do, uh, this is Alex.
That would be fine with us.
Okay. Good.
I don't have any other comments.
Anyone else?
This is Tim. I have none.
This is John. I, I'm sorry to be the, the wet blanket, but I just am not comfortable with the concept of using a private driveway for an emergency access.
Understood. All right. All right. Hearing those comments, we'll move forward. So I guess the next thing to do would be to, uh, uh, approve the waiver request letter. Uh, if everyone is comfortable with the waiver requests, I would look for a motion to, uh, approve their, the, uh, request letter. Or recommend, recommend. Okay. Thank you.
This is Tim. I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Seconds been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion. Uh, one, okay. One opposition. I'm sorry. All right. Motion carries. Uh, noted that John Swerdruck made the, the opposition. Um, all right. So that's your waiver request letter. Um, so are we good to move forward to voting to recommend preliminary final conditionally? You think we're good, Steve?
Yes.
All right. So somebody want to make that motion?
This is Andy. I'll make a motion to recommend preliminary final approval.
Based on, uh, completion of conditions?
Based on, thank you. Based on completion of conditions.
Okay. Can I get a second?
This is Alex. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I oppose.
Opposed.
One opposition and, uh, note, John Swerdruck was the opposition. All right. So the motion carries. So you have your preliminary final. Let you guys work out the rest of the details.
I think, Chris, I need to, another motion to authorize you to sign the component four A of the planning module.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. All right.
This is Alex.
No, you do it.
All right. This is Alex. I'll motion we, uh, complete the planning module.
I'll second it. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good luck.
I think Kurt, I had a discussion with Andy that, uh, he did want to be on the board of supervisors agenda next week. Do you know?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, if that's possible.
Yes. Not guaranteeing him approval, but we'll put him on the agenda.
Oh, come on, Steve.
All right. Do we have anything else with Schlosser?
Nope.
All right. Well, Kirk, you're free to go. Thank you. Good luck. All right. All right. So next on the agenda is the furlong planning module. So Steve, I'll spearhead that.
Yeah. This is a similar thing, just to give you the, the rundown and Alex, I don't know how much you're up on this with these new regulations, but you haven't seen a lot of planning modules over the last few years because DEP decided that the drip irrigation systems are what they refer to as the shallow limiting. You need the same 10 inches of good soil that you would for a spray irrigation system. But you could, don't have to install a spray. You could install, uh, it's what they refer to as a micromound system. Uh, and for the past couple of years, DEP decided that you didn't have to go through planning or planning modules to get that accomplished. They could just issue the permit through the health department. Well, they're reneging on that policy. And they've now set these parameters where you had to have your soils test done at a certain time and you have to have your planning module submitted to the township by June 1st in order to still, uh, get the easy approval. And if you don't, you have to follow more or less the old rules. Well, furlong did not get their soils testing done within the timeframe that DEP, uh, proposed, or it is now requiring. Second, furlong is an existing lot. It was created in 1984 as part of a subdivision, but from back, back in the, in the mid eighties. So it's been a vacant lot for um, three decades now. Uh, but it was left as, uh, an agricultural lot back when the original subdivision was done. So DEP asked for a planning module to, uh, change it from agricultural use to a residential use. It does qualify for, uh, I mean soils are not good. So it could be either a spray irrigation or a drip micromound. Because they didn't get their soils test done in time, they have to, they've submitted the planning module based on installing a spray irrigation system. So we're going to go through the exercise of approving a planning module for a spray irrigation system. But just like it was a few years ago, they will never install the spray irrigation system. They're going to get a permit for a drip micromound. They just can't do the planning or the planning module for a drip micromound. So we're back to the game that we played years ago, waiting new final guidance to come out from DEP. In any event, we have this planning module. Uh, it's a component one. So it doesn't have the, the four A that you would normally sign, but it does have a section for the planning commission to acknowledge that they have seen the planning module and that it's consistent with the zoning ordinance. So it's a single residential lot up off of Shoe Craft Road. Uh, let me see. It's quite large. I forgot the lot size off the top of my head. Yeah, it's a 10 and a half acre property off of Shoe Craft Road. But it's a single residential lot that's proposing a spray irrigation system that will never get built. And it'll get built with a drip irrigation system, or drip micromound. In any event, planning commission just needs to acknowledge that it meets zoning requirements and authorize the chairman to sign the planning module. Any questions on that one?
Simple and straightforward.
I have no comments or questions. So we just need to agree that it's, what, I forget your terminology, but, uh,
Yeah, it's consistent with zoning.
Consistent with zoning, yes. Uh, and then the, the plan needs to be signed by the planning commissions?
Chairman, yes. Yep.
The planning module actually, but yeah.
Planning module. Okay. So we just need to vote to approve to do that?
Yep. Just, you historically has always done that by motion to sign a planning module.
Can we get a motion to sign, uh, sign this planning module?
John, I'll make the motion.
This is Alex. I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, Chris, are you okay if I email the, the two forms to you for the two different projects? And you print them and sign them and get them back one way or another?
Yep.
Okay. I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else with furlong?
No. No, that's as straightforward as we get.
All right. Um, so next on the agenda would be old business. I have none. Is there any old business we need to deal with?
Yes.
Oh, there is?
Well, Butter Creek Builders.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he needs another extension. Um, again, this isn't for the sketch plan. This is for the original lot seven subdivision plan that he never finalized.
Right.
Um, so I, I let him know that he needs an extension, but I would recommend that you, uh, make a motion to recommend denial unless an extension is received.
All right. I'll make said motion. Now you have a second?
This is Tim. I'll second it.
All right. We'll give that to Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Anything else?
No, I was just going to touch base on the, the 318 Ridge Valley Road. Um, yeah, they, they called yesterday, or I guess it was yesterday and said they wanted to pull it from the agenda. If any of you read the letter, the real issue is they proposed the flag lot. The flag lot's not permitted in that zoning district. So it's proposed as three lots. I don't think they could get three lots out of it.
That's Ridge Road, 318 Ridge Road?
Yeah. If, if you're familiar, if you, if you just come past the Womboldt Farm on the low side of the road, there's a, a, an old stone and, and sided house that sits right out by the road. Um, it's that property. I think it was even vacant for a while, but there's somebody living in it now.
You mistakenly said Ridge Valley Road originally. That's why we got the question back, but yeah.
Right. Ridge Road. I'm sorry.
Yes. The third house past the Womboldt Farm on the left.
Yep.
I was like, there's going to be another development on Ridge Valley?
Uh, don't say that. No.
Someday. Yeah, someday.
Someday.
When Tim sells that.
Yeah, I was going to say the Ruth subdivision.
Yeah. Don't bank on that one anytime soon.
So they'd have to get relief to do the flag lot, correct?
I, I believe so.
Yeah. All right.
Were they going to fit three? Is that an area that was supposedly having houses with bad septic systems?
Yeah.
They want to put.
Well, it's going to have the sewer, the sewer line that PRA is going to extend down to Mountain View Road is, is going to go right in front of this. So the only way they could do this subdivision is with that public sewer.
That'd still seem pretty aggressive.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the zoning doesn't allow the flag lot. So, um, that's, that's his hurdle. Whether he's going to be, you know, whether he thinks two lots is good enough for him. I don't know. Maybe he'll walk away from it.
Right.
I don't, I, I think he owns it though. I'm not, I'm not sure now if he owns it, if he has it under agreement to sell.
All right.
I guess we'll hear his side of it next month or, or not.
Or not. Right. All right. Any, anything else on our old business?
I've got a question on a previous project that's not on the agenda. So I don't know whether it falls under old business or public comment.
Go ahead.
So I, I mean, I use the park a lot and I, I, every time I'm there, I'm trying to envision a water tower standing next to the township building and still, and still struggle with it. And then I noticed driving down Ridge Road that there is a water tank back off the road where Ridge Road intersects with County Line Road. And I, I looked at Google Earth and the elevation difference between that site and the township building is the township building is seven feet higher. So I was wondering why the water authority didn't consider just putting a second tank next to the one that they've already got as opposed to putting one in public view right next to the township building.
Uh, that's, that tank is Telford Borough Authority's tank, not North Penn. Um, just as an ownership issue. I, I don't know if they've talked, if they talked to, to Telford about, or about having, you know, a tank out in that area or not. But it's not their property. It's Telford's property.
That's also a lower tank, I think. Not that they couldn't build a taller one next to it.
Right.
Along those lines as well, with regard to the water tank at the township building. I understand that, uh, Select Properties is going to be coming back in with a, another proposal for 200 some odd homes on Lawn Avenue. Is that in the works?
Uh, we understand they, they had a meeting, a public meeting. Uh, yeah, but they haven't made a formal submission back to the township.
Right. But does that in any way tie into that tank? Is that where they're proposing now? Because all of a sudden this tank is now going to be at the township building and everywhere supply water to the 285 homes on Lawn Avenue?
No, that is, um, Perkasy Regional Authority is, that's their service district.
Understood, understood. But North Penn said that it doesn't matter. They can supply any customers through the existing agreements, either through Telford or Perkasy Regional Authority and they become Perkasy Regional Authority's customers. They just apply them water.
Or produce, uh, backup fire protection, but that is not, the township doesn't want tanks all over the place. You, you want to try to limit the amount of tanks that you have.
Understood. Just seems very convenient that it's on this side of 309. Whereas John had the question about why not put that tank back over Grandview if it's the institutional service area. And that was said about the overflow, uh, parking being there, but it just seems somewhat convenient that this side of the road, suddenly now we're back to 200 plus homes on, you know, Lawn Avenue, all kind of in the same timeframe.
I know lots of sites were looked at. I know sites on the other side of 309 were looked at too. Closer to Grandview Hospital. So there was sites looked all over.
And, and I think, uh, Tim, that PRA is still going to run a water line. Uh, probably up Mountain View Road and across 309, similar to what their sewer line is, is going to, to get to that area. So I, I think it might be connected from both sides, not just from this new tank, if, if that comes to fruition.
Interesting.
When did Select Properties have a public meeting about the Lauren Avenue development?
Supposedly it was a couple of weeks ago. I don't know. I, I was not privy to it until after the fact, John.
Mid-April sometime. I do not know the exact date off the top of my head.
And that was publicized?
I do not know how Select Properties notified the neighbors.
Okay. Cause I'm a neighbor.
Yeah, it wasn't township, it wasn't township sponsored. So it was all whatever selected.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty interesting.
No applications have been made to the township.
Okay. Any more on the water tower or Select Properties? Greg, do you have any old business?
I don't have any and there has been no public comment, just so you know.
Um, I mean, the only other thing would be the, uh, pending approvals and whatnot. You got anything, anything to worry about, Steve, besides Butter Creek?
No, I think Butter Creek was the only, the only issue.
Okay. Anything coming down the road for us?
Um, I'm not aware of anything new. Um, at some point, uh, you know, TH Properties will be back with their, their development, but no, I'm not, I don't know of anything that's imminent. Yeah. I don't think I have any new submissions, Greg, do I, from, for next month? I think it's.
No, I can't think of any either.
Yeah. Might be quiet next month. Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah. Still early.
We'll have the applicant who was supposed to be here tonight, next month, right?
Right, if he chooses to come, he would, he would come next month.
Right.
Which is Clay Heckler, so then you could ask him all you want about his other property, so.
There you have your opportunity. All right, new business, I have no new business.
Hey, Chris, this is Alex.
Yep.
I thought I saw something about, uh, doing a status report on the comp plan and where we were on recommendations from that.
Right.
I guess by, I thought about that a lot, there were a lot of things that were potentials out there, but I think, uh, low hanging fruit might be looking into doing some kind of a farmer's market. That was, I think, one of the recommendations.
I think that was supervisors' role, if I'm not mistaken, Alex, for responsibility for that one. I don't think it was planning commission.
Okay, that might be, I was just, I know a lot of the other ones were like reviewing the village ordinances and stuff like that, but Jim, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, that, the, uh, the whole thing on the farmer's market was for us. We have not taken that up yet. I think it'd be kind of a neat idea, but I just wonder how we would work that in so we didn't conflict with Perkasy or Sellersville or anybody else. I, I think it'd be great to have something in the park like that where people come on a Saturday morning.
Right.
So, just my thoughts, yeah.
By the way, Jim, I love your background.
Thank you, Alex.
chilly out there?
Yeah, yeah, it's freezing.
Yeah, I, I just briefly glanced at that, uh, recommendation list and saw the planning commission was on a lot of the, a lot of the ideas there, but, uh, maybe we should, uh, make a point to everyone, have a look at that this, this, uh, month and we'll have a little discussion next month about, uh, what we're actually responsible for promoting.
Either that or if we have a, a slow month with no items, maybe it takes some time to identify the low hanging fruit in that month.
Any other new business? All right, I have none. Um, any public comment?
I just wanted to mention that my background picture here, um, the project is actually a little farther along than this. They're putting probably the last row of solar panels on tomorrow and the wiring's almost all complete, they've got all the inverters in and everything. So I just wanted to offer the planning commission an opportunity to, if you're interested, if anyone who wants, wants to come out and see it, understand how it works, understand what it's going to save us, and, and what all it's going to cover, cost, everything, feedback, I mean, I'll give you any kind of information you want. If you'd like to schedule a couple of minutes to come out, I would, uh, be happy to meet you out there.
Yes, thank you. When, uh, when do you think it'll be operational?
I think they could be done within the next four or five days and then it's up to PP and L, because they have to give approval for us to flip the switch. So that could be a month.
Right.
Ask Greg, it could be six months. But then if we accidentally flip the switch, we could go live right away. And he's saying no.
So could anyone on the line?
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Yeah, well, they want to get through another billing cycle before they give you approval, probably.
Right, right.
Yeah, I might be interested in taking a look at that.
Okay, Chris, I'd be glad to meet with you out there.
Yeah.
I, I, Tony and I met earlier on before, uh, before a lot of the panels were up, but, uh, it's very interesting the way it all works. We've got four, four school districts interested in coming out to bring out students to, to take a look at it and, and then set up a regular schedule for the school districts to come out and bring kids out.
Nice. There you go. All right, well, thank you. Uh, any other public comment? All right, hearing none, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Andy, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone, have a great night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.